Distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Namira Rahim, your emcee for today. Welcome to the sixth town hall meeting, co-organized by Charity Council, Centre for Social Development Asia, CSDA, a research centre in National University of Singapore, and Chartered Institute of Management Accounts, CIMA. We thank you for taking the time to attend this event. Today's theme of the town hall meeting is charity governance in Singapore. First, let us put our hands together to welcome Dr Girat E., Chairman of Charity Council, on stage to deliver the welcome address.
Distinguished speakers and panelists, fellow members of the Charity Council, ladies and gentlemen. A very good afternoon to all of you. Welcome to this session, co-organized by the Charities Council, Centre for Social Development Asia, and supported by the Chartered Institute of Management Accountants, CIMA. Today marks our sixth town hall meeting, which concludes the three years' research project conducted by CSDA since 2015. In each of the past three years, three key topics has been researched and shared, namely financial characteristics of the institution of public character in the social service sector, fundraising practices in 2016 and 2017 this year, the timely topic of charity governance in Singapore, which is our theme for today's town hall meeting. For those who have religiously attended most of the previous town hall meetings, I applaud you for your commitment to continuous learning and your support. We hope that the town hall meeting has helped to bring charity to good governance practices and you have brought the knowledge back to your organisation. Although this concludes the research over the three years, do rest assured that there will be other town halls and events and we will continue to bring more knowledge sharing to all of you. The charity sector is vital to any country. According to a website, independentsector.org, in 2015, in the US, there were 1.4 million tax exam organisations that took up 10% of the workforce or 11.4 million jobs. The total charitable giving in 2015 was 370 billion, not million but billion. 25% of adult population volunteered their time, their talents, their energy, and the net value of this time that the volunteers gave was US dollars 23.56 per hour. Of course, it's a much more matured environment than Singapore, we are a very young nation, but it shows that this third sector has the potential to grow and we should feel excited about it. Charities serve with strong purposes and fills the gaps in society. We catch the people who may have fallen out of the safety nets at some point in their lives. I believe all of you want to contribute to serve the people in the community till the day where there is really no need for a charity. That means we have succeeded in our job, but I don't think that day will ever come, not during my lifetime. But we keep striving with that aspirational goals. Have you ever wondered if your charity would still be around in SG100? Many of us see the future as an unknown, likening it to looking into the crystal ball. There are a lot of changes in the environment, it affects us as charities as well. A very good example, you have read in the newspaper recently, over cloud sourcing even for donations, where someone who is in dire need posts something on the cloud, on the internet, and quite easily raised quite a few thousand dollars. How are you exploiting this new technology for your fundraising? How are you communicating with the public? Quite clearly, these individuals don't have organisation, don't have a branding, but they go out and tell their story on the internet and the public reacts and give very generously. So some of the charities who are struggling to raise funds may be wondering, so what can I do it? What can I do differently? How come these individuals can raise the funds so easily, whilst I, an organisation that has been around for so long doing good work, struggle to get donations? We cannot emphasise enough that strong governance is essential for the sustainability of charity. It's having strong governance and as a foundation in organisation that helps you to build the trust within yourself and donors. Growingly, people are becoming more questioning, becoming more of an informed giver, and they really want to be sure that out of all the charities that exist, that they're giving their money to a charity that is putting the funds to good use, achieving good outcomes. We really strongly believe that in lifelong learning, spreading the message of good governance is the core of our work and we are glad to have many partnering agencies on board who have contributed in their own ways. Aside from town halls, the council and our partners will continue to engage charities in various learning platforms, be it sharing sessions, community practices of our annual conference. CSDA still continues to be one of the council's partnering agencies and just to share, CSDA is now working on the Thought Leadership Governance Book, targeted to be launched in 2019. Nonetheless, it takes two hands to clap with our plethora of enablers, which are either provided for free or at highly subsidised rate. We hope you will continue to make full use of them. Whilst you benefit from them, do also share and spread the word within the organisations or other charities who may be unaware of the assistance that is being provided, that is aware, that is made available to charities. Now, I use the word charities here, but I think some of you can detect that I'm not very comfortable and one of my biggest wishes is that we change the title from VWO to NGOs or drop the word welfare. Because the genesis of it, charities existed as welfare organisation to start with, but many of you have gone way beyond that and your aspirations are much larger. And the problem with retaining this title of VWO with a great emphasis on the word welfare is that charities always operate under the model of lack and we don't run it the way that we should. We don't employ the best people that we can find and paying them decent salaries. And so most of the charities experience very high turnover. To me, I think that's one of the greatest challenges of charities, trying to apply good governance. Because good governance is not a checklist, it is part of the value and the culture of organisation. People should do it because they understand and believe in it. But if you constantly have staff turnover, you're always starting from the beginning point again to inculcate into them the right values and the right culture. Well, I said this before at other sessions, that we are but stewards of our organisations, we don't own them. We may have started organisations, but we are operating as a stewards. We are accountable to many stakeholders and most importantly, some may not realise it, we are accountable to our beneficiaries. The driving gears are good governance, proper internal controls and accountability to our stakeholders. If you don't run your organisation well, you are shortchanging your beneficiaries. You're not giving them the best that you could. So I think the only thing that can change the whole mindset and the culture is to realise we are but stewards. With that message, I hope you get a lot out of today's session. We have two panels discussions afterwards, please ask your questions and today we will give more opportunities for individuals on the floor to express and articulate their own ideas on subject matters as well, so the rest of us can learn from it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr E., for sharing with us the importance of charity governance in ensuring sustainability of the charities. Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our next speaker, Dr Isabel Sim, who will be providing a preview of CSDA's research on charity governance in Singapore. Dr Isabel, please.
Thank you very much for taking time to be here. We are very fortunate to have received three years' funding from CIMA, who has enabled us to do this work, to share with us what is really happening at our charity sector. So we have really completed the first year's report, which is actually the financial status of our charity. Last year, we presented findings on our fundraising landscape in Singapore. This year, we done three research reports on charity governance. Now, these are all the people who has made it possible. My greatest indebtedness to all our students from NUS. Every year, we take in about 60 students to help us to do the research together with us and today, a lot of the arches out there are actually our students. About in two or three weeks' time, they're going to have their exams. So this is the amount of dedication that they have. Alright, oh, it's coming back again. Now, we had three reports this year and it will be available from the 15th of November. I have some echoing, someone deal with it. Alright, okay. Now, I would like you to take out your handouts in your bags because it's really technical and those handout will help you to follow what I'm going to say. Do bear with me as it is quite detailed, so I'm trying to do this at the best I can to make it as light-hearted as possible. Firstly, in the first booklet, we actually tried to tell you what is the code of charity governance all about. In the second booklet, we actually tell you what charities kind of challenges that they face when they try to implement the code. And lastly, we tried to document and show what charities has been doing. So it's quite different in each of these booklets. Right, for the first booklet, we actually provide with you with the development of charity governance in Singapore. We talked to you about the key stages. We also showcase what are the best case studies in Singapore. We show you country studies. We also show you what general academic research has been carried about, about the various types of governance, what is good, what is not good. To begin, let's look at our sector. The sector is growing. As of now, we have over 2,200 charities, of which more than 600 have IPC status. From the trend line, you notice that the sector is expanding over time. Many people ask, what is charity governance? Charity governance is actually defined and qualified differently based on different professional groups. There are people who are in the leadership area that talks about it. There are people who are in the accounting area that talks about it. There are people who are in the legal area that talks about it. But there's no one common language because they're all trained differently, they're all concerned about different things. Then again, we have different countries that deal with their welfare, that deal with the charity sector differently. Therefore, at the end of the day, what charity governance is, is different in different countries. There is no one standardised way. Through research and through my travelling around in different parts of the world, I understand one thing for sure. The legal framework for Singapore's charity governance is one of the most developed. And what does it entail actually? When we look at charity governance, we are looking at setting direction for the charity. We are looking at managing policies, we are looking at monitoring organisational performance and most important of all, charity governance is about accountability. Let's look at the scenario in Singapore, when the charity governance, this whole landscape started, these regulations. It started in 2006, when the Commissioner's Office is formed and not long after, the Charity Council is being formed. There's a difference between the Charity Council and the Commission. The Commission is made out of civil servants, whereas the Council is made out of volunteer. So Dr E. is a volunteer, is an elected representative from all of you. And then in 2007, you have the first code and in 2011, it was being revised and this year, the second revision has taken place. And from next year, you have to look at the new code and follow whatever guideline there are in there. Now, before we actually talk about the code, please do not forget there are actually regulations. If you are a charity, you must abide by these regulations. This regulation tells you how you should be registered, tells you how you should fundraise and if you are IPC status, you have even more guidelines and regulations that you must abide by. Okay? So there are issues such as how you should report yourself in your accounts and in your financial statements and annual reports. So do take note of that, this is summarised in such a way that it will be easy for you to navigate. Once again, who are there to ensure that the entire sector is following the code? There is two sets of people. One, essentially, are the people who are from the Commissioners. The Commissioners have five sector administrators who are there to guide each sector in ensuring that they comply with the requirements of the code as well as the legislation. And on the side, you have the Charity Council, which is formed by elected members who represents the charity, who then dialogues together with the Commissioner's Office. Okay, so the code, let's recap. Essentially, the code is there to tell you how we as a charity sector should behave, should do the correct things to strengthen the public confidence. And most important of all, the code is not easy to navigate. The code has nine sections. What are the nine sections? The first and formal section that you really should look at is board governance. The entire governance code is actually engineered so that the responsibility of moving the charity to a certain direction and to have oversight of the governance of the charity lies on the board. And what are the key areas that boards need to look at? Firstly, conflict of interest. Secondly, strategic planning. Where's your charity heading? Next, programme management. How is your programme running? Is it meeting targets? Is it making full use of the money that's donated? Is it actualising social impact? Human resource. How are you hiring your people? Did you hire your relatives? Did you pay them too much? Did you pay them too little? Are you taking good care of them? Who are your volunteers? Is there a pitiful amount, one of them? Very important, they are serving the poor and the vulnerable. You have to make sure that you check who is coming on board to help your beneficiaries. Fundraising, financial management. Is everything in order? Do you have a lot of money that you think you have or is some of the money missing? Are you raising enough? Are you raising in the right way? How have you gone about doing it? Lastly, you need to take care of your public image. Is it in good shape? Are you doing all well in the birth, but managing your public image in the wrong way? So all these are specification as to how well governed a charity is. So most important of all, how do you as a charity show that you are being well governed? Three key public documents. Number one, your annual report. You have to tell people what you have done. Very important, if you have done it, tell them. Tell them in your annual report, tell them in your financial statement. That is the most important and that is what it means by disclosure, just tell them. Lastly, the most important of all is your GEC, the Governance Checklist. This checklist is the one where your sector administrator will look at and say, why didn't you comply, could you please explain? And this checklist will be provided on the charity portal, where all other stakeholder is also going to look at. So one more time, everything put aside, what is most important is you show that you have complied. If you didn't comply, say so, in three documents, annual report, financial statement, GEC. Okay, we have to navigate through the everything and we summarise this. So what do boards do? What are board members required to do? Number one, they have to deal with the accounts and the financial matters. Your board must approve the annual budget. They must make sure that they review internal controls, they deal with risk management, they have good usage of the facilities and their assets. Secondly, boards need to approve and review your vision and mission. They need to review your strategic planning. They also need to evaluate the board's performance. Public image. They need to look at their communication policy. Have you nominated a person to be the spokesperson? Human resource management. Did you do the Code of Conduct for your organisation? Have you have documented human resource policy? Have you got the claims reimbursement policy in place? Supervision, appraisal and development of your staff member. Declaration of conflict of interest, while the procedures to deal with conflict of interest and arrangement for whistle blowing. Right, I think this is really important and you can actually download a copy of this from the RSM website. With the new refinement, you actually have to do a lot of things. I'm just trying to highlight some of these things that you need to do and you haven't done it, please look into it because January first, you have to make sure this is in place. If it is not in place, you have to explain it. Firstly, you have to make sure you have an induction and training programme for your board members. Secondly, you need to have a matrix of what are the things that your board need to make decisions about. Thirdly, have you set the renewal, board renewal in place? Because the new term limit is 10 years and the new term limit for Thresher is four years. You have to look into it now. Okay, now, in terms of Code of Conduct, have you got a Code of Conduct document in place for your volunteers? For your board members? If you are spending money outside of your core activity, you have to explain. Donation in kinds. If you've been receiving money, donation in kind, you need to set up a system of recording and valuation of the donation in kind. Okay, and then to have information about board members. This is really important, we did our research. There are not many people who are telling us when their board member were actually being appointed. And you also have to tell people how many board meetings you have a year, how many people show up and who didn't show up, all in your annual report. Are you ready for that? You have to make provision for this. Okay? And you have to make provision for disclosure on your top three staff remuneration and have you got your whistle blowing policy in place? If you have, please make sure you disclose that in your annual report. Okay, so that gives you an idea about what you need to do to continue to operate as a charity. Mind you, if you are not ready, what do you do? Explain, comply and explain. Explain that you're not ready, but you are already looking into it. Okay? Alright, now, let's talk about what charities feedback about, how they've gone about doing this Code of Governance. We done four focus groups study, three of them were from management group and one from the board. And we asked them the following four questions. One, what is driving charity governance? Who are the people behind this charity governance effort? How do you think the charity governance is going to evolve in future? What are the challenges that you have with complying? How do you find the usefulness of the public resources that is made available? Are you ready to comply with Code 2017? And this is what we found. We found that there are two types of drivers, internal and external. Internally, you have the board, you have your subcommittee and you have your management that is driving this, implementing this. And externally, the donors have expectations, right? The sponsors, the beneficiary and most importantly, the public and the government sector. Okay? Now, I really like this code and it says, board should have helicopter view and guide the charity. And we must understand the difference. Board provides guidance and the management actually operationalise it and we need to know the clear difference. Okay, what are some challenges? The number one challenge we have are board. The board matters. They feel that a lot of the board have difficulty renewing people to come on board to serve. They have problems having board members understand how charity work because most of them come from the private sector. And they have other issues, which is high staff turnover and they are very stretched. They are always torn between, should I take this one dollar that I'm left with to serve my beneficiary of a compliance? And then they have new risks that they have to deal with, especially with the social media. Do you think that the resources that is already provided, such as courses, events like this and also funding, useful? The answer is yes. And they say, this is good and we found the templates useful. However, the templates are a little bit outdated, could you please update the templates? And this is from what the participant told us. Are the charities ready with the Code 2017? The answer is yes, we are ready, we would like to do it, but give us a little bit more time. Give us a little bit more time to operationalise those things that we require and most important, give us more resources. Okay, now, what are the challenges that they have at the board level? One, they said that, you know, we think that there is a lot of information that actually gets stopped at the management, the board doesn't receive it. So that's one of the comments we received. And they feel that board training, should it be compulsory? If it's made compulsory, then you're going to make the situation worse because then some of these board members won't want to join anymore. So they are a bit kind of a dilemma. They feel that board training is good, but you're going to have to deal with situation if it stops people from coming to volunteer. Conflict of interest. They feel that it is good to have a conflict of interest policy in place, but they also feel that if we were to keep the director with the conflict of interest out of the discussion, we could lose out a lot of the richness and not having the background information for discussion. Strategic planning. This is very interesting. A lot of the charities feel that they have been undergoing through a lot of pressure to build what is called economies of scale, that is, to become bigger. They feel that, yes, to become bigger, you actually become more efficient. However, you also have more compliance. So they are kind of like, oh, what should we do? They don't have the answer. And they feel that if they need to have capacity building and capability building in their portfolio, resources should be provided as well. Right? Human resources, they talk about, how can you address the problem of high turnover? Well, really, they haven't got much option because money speaks. They haven't got enough funding to retain the people that they really want to. Okay, they also mentioned that they have great difficulty doing volunteer checks. So they were wondering whether there could be something that could be done at an industry level so that we could make it standardised for our volunteer checks, such as police checks. Okay? Now, very often, they also talk about, if I'm a small charity, I have greater problem because I am very small, I'm very stretched, I can't do all the things that's required of me and if I have to tell my volunteers, you must be doing this, this and this and this, it's going to be a disaster. And if I have to tell my volunteers, you must be doing this, this and this and this, it's going to be a disaster. Okay, financial management, this is a big cry for any accountant who may be seated amongst here, that. Because of the new regulations, the new calls for more audits, internal and external. The charities really do not have money to do that. They want volunteers accountant to come forward to help them. Okay, and they also com- complained to us that, you know, sometimes the auditors are from the financial sector. Or from the private sector. They don't really know how charity sector work. And they therefore require a lot of these checks that will work in the private sector, but would not work in the charity sector. Okay, fundraising, again, this, this discussion about donation and in kind, how do we value it? How do we record it? This has been brought up a few times. And then engaging of the third party fundraiser. Are third party fundraiser well first with the requirements of the code? Do they know what is required? That's a challenge. And they all voiced this, there is always a trade off. If you are too specified, too stringent with your code, there is really no room for us to think out of the box. There is a trade off. Okay, disclosure and transparency, we brought this discussion about, should board members be remunerated? And was hardly debated. At one hand, if you remunerate, you may attract better people. But many of the participants here feel that board members should not be remunerated. And the other item was, should we disclose the attendance of board members? And many argued that, well, it's good because we'll get rid of those people who are non-performing. But do you know that many board members do more than just attending board meetings? So it may not be fair. Okay, public image, a lot of, all the, all the participants told us they have great difficulty. Understanding what is required of public image. How do they go about having a policy, they will appreciate more guidelines? Now, this particular finding is actually sample bias, in our opinion. As a scientific person, we will tell you that perhaps those people who sign up, they are really very good. It's not representative of the entire sample, um of all the charities, because there's only two sectors that's being captured here. Okay, now, this last one is statistic heavy, so you please bear with me. We want to know exactly what have charities reported in your annual reports? G E C and financial statements. What we have done is that we've collected a hundred and forty five charities annual report, G E C and financial statements. For three years, we looked into it, we put them in numbers. This is a big job. To do that, so that you can appreciate what the student has done, they have to download a hundred and forty five of those documents. Over three years, so approximately five to six hundred individual documents. And thumbs three, a thousand five hundred documents, write a robotic program, crunch the number and analyze it. So this is our sample, we took two thousand over registered charities, we stream it down and we're left with a hundred and forty five. This is a three year breakdown. What is important is that we try our very best to have a mix of charities. And it fall within a bell curve, meaning that the one that's in the middle is the biggest group, which is your enhanced group. So we actually captured the basic two, the enhance and the advanced group. Now, what are the questions we ask finally that was meaningful? First and foremost, we ask, how do, what do charities disclose about their board matters? What is the name? What is the date of appointment? Okay, how many meetings did they have? What was the attendance at the meetings? The next question, who are in the boards? How big are the boards? Is the chairman, a chairman or a chairwoman? How many female, how many males on the board? What, how, how do they com- disclose their conflict of interest? Who tell us that they have a conflict of interest policy in place? Who are in their event advisors, who are in their subcommittees? And what do they tell us about their management? Okay, disclosure on the board and management matters. So this is their three year, okay, it's quite consistent, the trend is very consistent. So this is what we found for the latest data set, so that it's easier for you to grapple with what's going on. Out of a hundred and forty five, a hundred and forty five, forty one, tell us who are on their board? The name, the destination, and that's it. Only forty three tell us when they were appointed. Without that piece of information, we do not know how long the board member has been staying with the organization. So this particular information is required from next year. Please bring back to your board. Tell them they have to do this. Disclosure on board meetings and board attend- attendance, wow, amazing numbers. Only nineteen tell us that they, about their board, um number of meetings. And out of this nineteen, only ten, ten out of a hundred and forty five, tell us about their board attendance. So how many board meetings do charities have in a year? The standard in the private sector is four, per qu- one per quarter. Whereas in charities, it's between three to twelve, right? Yeah. And in terms of those who disclose about those meetings, it is by name. X, Y, Z attended three out of four, et cetera. Okay, so we wanted to know a little bit more about board composition. Out of a hundred and forty, uh five, okay, um, we know that, um. There is actually. Board size is an amazing number of five to thirty. Can you imagine attending a board meeting with thirty people? Very interesting. And the most common size is ten. To put us in perspective, what is the magic number, the best number for the number of board members in a board? To studies, for private sector, the magic number is seven and no more than nine. And through all the studies we looked at, nonprofit boards are normally bigger. But if you have fifty two, you have thirty, I'm afraid to say it's really kind of non-functioning. Okay. Now, the other thing that the charities actually have a very good standard. Is actually the number of representative, that staff representative that sit on boards. With private sector, they normally have the CEO, CFO seat on the board. But in terms of charity, out of the hundred and forty five, we only have six that has staff representative. So we've done very well here, very independent. Now, let's look at gender ratio. Hundred and forty three tell us that they have chairperson. Out of the hundred and forty three. You have hundred and twelve that are male and only thirty one that's female chairperson. So one female is to approximately four male, so it's dominated by males. Now, in terms of the board members, we have to collectively calculate them. And that is, we have about one thousand six hundred board members in our sample. Of which, we found that five hundred and seventy of them almost are female. And more than a thousand are male. So this gives us the ratio of one female to two male, which is a better ratio. Okay, so one more time, one for chairperson, one female is to four male. For board members as a collective, one female to two male. This gives you an idea of what we're dealing with. Okay, now this one, you have to hold your seat a little because it's quite complicated. We have a rough time doing this. Okay, you bear with us. You are recommended to have an X number of subcommittee. And depending on the amount of income you have, the subcommittee requirement changes. A rule of thumbs tells you that the smaller you have, the lesser number of subcommittee. And the bigger you are, the more number of subcommittees. Let's go through this, be patient with me. First, basic two is here, the very basic, based on the old code, you are required to have audit and program. Of this audit and program, in the new code, you have to add on, please remind the people back home, finance and fundraising. So you have additional subcommittee to have. Please do something about it now. It is not easy getting people on board. If you are an enhanced here, which is the biggest group of charities. You have to have all of this here, which is audit, program, fundraising, nomination, human resource. And finance. Again, now you're starting to see something. It is not just the ten board members that we're dealing with, there's another whole entourage of volunteers you need to engage with. And then, if you are in advanced here, you would have more. The additional one is investment. So you have to have seven subcommittees. And normally, the subcommittee is of the size of three to ten. So I'm just trying to show you a picture. If you have ten board members plus seven subcommittee. Imagining that they are of number three, so it's seven thumbs three twenty one plus ten. Your management got to deal with forty one volunteers, telling them what to do. It's not fun. And they always show up at night or on weekends. I'm just trying to put, to show you scientific evidence. Okay, next bit. And we were very, very shocked. Because besides board members and subcommittee, they have invented new categories themselves. When we were looking at it, they have advisors. And there was one charity in particular who had seventeen advisors. My goodness, I don't want to work in that charity because I have to deal with sixty people calling me over the weekends. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to be funny here. Okay, so out of a hundred and forty five charities that we studied, there are forty two with advisors on board. The standard and common number of advisor is one. Okay. Subcommittee, it is so, the, the, the information is so all over the place, so please bear with me. Okay. Let's talk about enhanced group, because the basic group, the two or three that we have actually in our sample, they didn't tell us. That they have any subcommittee. They may have, they may have forgotten to tell us, that doesn't matter. Let's look at this. Now, with the enhanced group, the way to tabulate it is to tell you what is common. Most of them actually have a human resource committee. So if you have that, well done. Next, a lot of them have audit. Program, fundraising, what is really, really weak is nomination and appointment. If you are a public, private sector company, this is a key subcommittee that you need to have. This really explains why you have problem with your board renewal. Because you haven't got a subcommittee that is there to look into this. Now, let's look at the scenario for the advanced committees, um advanced charity. The most common ones are the audit and the appointment. See, they do things a little bit different here. Okay, and then they have fundraising and investment. Program and human resource takes a backseat. Quite different scenario altogether. Okay. Right, disclosure of, um, conflict of interest, a hundred and forty five of them. Only ninety three has declaration to say that we have a conflict of interest, um, policy in place. And out of this hundred and forty five, only sixty seven tells us that if there's a director has a conflict of interest. They will not attend the meeting. All you have to do is very easy, make sure you document that in your annual report and you're done for, nothing more required. Okay, so make sure you document and tell everyone, this is in order and you'll be fine. Okay. What do charity talk, tell the stakeholder about their management? A hundred and forty five of them, only eighty five tell us about their management. All you have to do is that if the management is preparing the annual report, tell us who your CEO is. Tell us who your CFO is. Tell us who is your director of program. That's good enough. That's all what people want to know. How long they've been there, what their credentials are. That actually give the general public confidence that you have capable people in place. Tell us, just brag about it, it's not difficult to do. Okay, now, um, only thirty eight of them tell us in their annual report. That none of their staff are involved in directly setting their own remuneration. Again, this is really easy to do. If your staff do not get involved in setting their own remuneration. Just write that one line. It, it's a big brownie point. Okay, now, what we have done very well here is, a hundred and twenty one of them, see, they have done the most difficult stuff. Is to tell us how much the top three, um, staff are being paid. Okay, about eighty five percent of them, the top three staff are paid below a hundred thousand. So I told my student, if you want to make a lot of money, please don't go into that sector. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a labor of love. Okay, now again, let me tell you that this report is not without flaws, right? We only captured the health and social welfare. And this is dependent on self-reported data. That means if you report it, I capture it. If you don't report it, I can't capture it, all right? And we have huge difficulty. We would love to do more, tell you who are the good souls who've been sitting in the board and leading the charity. But guess what? I haven't got any information because you're not telling me. So be kind to us, tell us a lot about it so we can do better job in informing the general public. Who are these good people who have come on board to serve the charity sector? Okay, thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Dr Isabel, for giving us an overview of the report and its various key takeaways. Today, we are pleased to invite our panelists on stage to deliver a short sharing session. On their involvement in the social service sector. We would now like to invite Ms Christine Wong, Executive Director of Samaritans of Singapore, S O S. Next, we have Dr Girat E, Chairman of Charity Council. Dr E is currently the President of the Institute of Singapore Chartered Accountants, I S C A. And serves as Chairman of the I S C A Executive Committee. We also have Mr Yap Wai Ming, lawyer and partner of Morgan Lewis Stamford Singapore. He's also a board member of Rental Hospital, Stroke Support Station, Sing Health Foundation. Vanguard Medifund and Tan Talk Sing Hospital Community Charity Fund. Last but not least, we also have with us Dr William Wan, Chairman of Prison Fellowship Singapore. And General Secretary of Singapore Kindness Movement with us in the panel. The session will be moderated by Mr Chris Ong, Chief Executive Officer of Shared Services for Charities.
Uh, once again, good afternoon, welcome to the panel sharing. First of all, I'd like to invite Ms Wong. As an executive director at the Samaritans of Singapore. Would you like to share with us the importance of charity governance? How do you work with your board to meet the guidelines in the code of governance? As well as how do your staff implement the directives from the board? And finally, the rewards and challenges from this governance process. Ms Wong, please.
Hi, I can see that there's a lot of audience here today. Um, I, I'm actually sharing experiences from the number of years of experience and not in a particular agency. So I, I think definitely over the years, I've been in the sector for twenty seven years. And I think our charity sector has grown a lot and it's very different now. I remember when I first started in the charity, what we are trained to do is to serve our clients and that's about all. Uh, but now it's rather challenging because we are practitioner. So even for myself, the route to, uh, looking at governance has not been easy. Uh, but I think it's really important because I also, uh, begin to actually embrace it. Because the guidelines actually help us to run a more efficient agency. And also to ensure that we have a good public image that we can tell our donors we are doing. And also to ensure that we have a good public image that we can tell our donors we are doing, uh, excellent work, we are meeting our mission ambition. So I think it's important though, the journey may be a bit difficult. Especially, I think now with the demands, uh, even more. Uh, it is challenging, but definitely I think it's important. But I must give, uh, credit to my staff. I think we cannot do it alone. Uh, even as the ED of the organization, we need very, uh, good senior staff to help us in this journey. Uh, because without the staff, we are unable to actually ensure that we meet the governance guidelines. So basically, uh, I think I would like to say that it is important because I turn to the guidelines for guidance sometimes uh, to remind my board that these are the guidelines that we have to, uh, meet and also use that, uh, as my guiding point.
Uh, thank you very much. I think it is quite clear there is, has to be, uh, process where a lot of people, everybody has to pitch in. And it's not impossible for the board itself or just the management. But it has to be a very much of a collaborative effort.
Next, I'd like to invite Mr Yap as a partner at Morgan Lewis Stamford LLC and also a board member of various charities, uh, Rensselaer, Sing Health, Tan Talk Sing Hospital, Stroke Support Station and Vanguard Medifund Committee. Uh, please share with us, what role do you play as a lawyer on the board? What's the nature of the work? What are the legal challenges you face which affect the charity governance? And please share with us. Thank you.
That's a long, long and powerful. Um, this is working? It is. Okay. Maybe tell me a bit briefly about how I got involved in the charities that, um, I'm a corporate lawyer to start with and then, you know, uh, probably ten years ago, I, I, I opened a newspaper and there was all these issues relating to, to the, um, uh, troubles affecting the Rensselaer Hospital. So, and, and they have just recently, we constituted the, the board and I know the audit committee, uh, chair, uh, person who is actually a, uh, audit partner of one of the big fours. So I called him up and says, look, uh, I would like to help and, and offered my service. And lo and behold, I was then pull in and, uh, got to serve on the audit committee and also on the corporate governance committee at that point in time. And, um, one thing led to another, uh, and when I joined the board, uh, two years later formally because I just served on the committee, I discovered that, um, the Rensselaer actually operated as a society. Um, a society means that it doesn't have legal personality. If somebody screws up, all the board members will get hit by a lawsuit. Uh, and being a lawyer, I'm, I'm, I'm a bit risk adverse and, um, first reaction is, I think we need to protect the board members who are all volunteers. We don't earn anything. We are contributing our time and energy and the last we want is a lawsuit against us. So, uh, the first thing I did was to, uh, suggest a corporatization of the society into a company limited by guarantee. And that process started with, of course, the, uh, Minister, uh, Ministry of Health Sector Administrator and with the long discussions and finally we got the constitution all agreed and, uh, the CLG was formed. Uh, we got the new IPC status and everything was migrated from the society into the company. Um, so in the past, we call ourselves, uh, committee member. Now we call ourselves, uh, board members. Uh, of course, one thing led to another and, um, I think there was a lack of, uh, uh, legal representation in the charity sector. So somehow I, I, I got, uh, references even from the MOH themselves to tell me, hey, these other charities, they need help, can you help them? So ended up Tan Talk Sing Hospital came to see me, uh, Jorong, uh, General Hospital and, and Alexandra Hospital all came and they are all setting up the CLG. So, so in the process, you know, if I step helping one after the other, uh, then they also ask me, can you come and serve? So that's how I got involved in the process. And, um, when I look at most of the charities that, uh, called upon me to help out is because they don't have legal representation on the board. And, and I thought that's how my contribution became helpful. And of course, from one charity, the experience that I have learned from there can be applied across the board. So somehow, if you look at all the names of the charities that I am asked to serve on, they're all health sector charities. Uh, and to some extent, I think it's good. Uh, I then was able to leverage up in terms of the, the kind of, uh, shared experience that I have from one and, and, and apply to the others. Uh, so that's my contribution to the, to the charity sector. And of course, following from this, and not surprisingly, I think even the Ministry of Health, uh, have already started this program since last year, uh, to, uh, kind of corporatize almost all their funds into CLGs. Uh, so when I was, uh, on board of Sing Health, they said, oh, I'm going to corporatize this into a CLG and, you know, you are going to be a subcommittee of the larger group. And because they, they want to maximize the, um, uh, financial management. Because each charity you are managing or, or have funds of a few million dollars, but combined because they are all funded by the ministry, it could be tens or even hundreds of millions of dollars. And if it is properly invested, you get better returns. So I was quite glad to be off that because the responsibility of managing a lot of this money when, you know, you are just a volunteer is, is very heavy. So let it be managed by the people who have the financial expertise to, to take care of the funds. So to that, I was quite grateful. And to that extent, I think most charities, uh, I'm not sure, maybe some of you can share your own experiences, finding, um, um, legal expertise to serve on your board probably, um, is, is going to be difficult. Um, and, um, if you do have any of those problems, do let me know. I'll see whether my community of legal friends can put up their hand to serve you guys if, if, if possible. I mean, to that extent, I think a lot of charities, uh, slip into the cracks because not all of them, uh, um, uh, you may have all the codes, you may have all these things, but very few of them wanted to read them. And I think that because the passion to serve is very great. And I think that sometimes they all just serve because they think that that's how they should do it. But they never look at the rules, they never look at the compliance side. And, uh, once you have all these things, uh, you need to be a bit more careful. Uh, so to that extent, I think there's a lot of compliance requirements which sometimes lawyers, uh, can contribute to that aspect of it, okay?
Uh, thank you very much, Dr Yap. So if any of you is in a society and you're very concerned, I think you should know what to do, yeah? Okay. Next, we'd like to invite Dr Wan as the Chairman of the Prison Fellowship Singapore and General Secretary of the Singapore Kindness Movement. Please share with us, what does the work of a chairman of a charity involve? Are the challenges the same for both organizations that you're working with regard to the charity governance? Thank you.
Thank you. This, sorry, the line is not long enough. Hello. Yeah. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Um, the chairman is the chairman. He is in charge of the chairs. I mean, I'm serious, I'm serious. Because you look at the chairs on the board and you want to be sure that strategically, they are seated in the right chair. So that instead of giving trouble to the management, they are actually there to facilitate the work of the management. And therefore, the first thing about, uh, chairman's leadership is strategic leadership. Um, helping the board members to play to their strength. And second, it's, uh, to support the operational leadership of the executive director. It's very important to distinguish between the strategic and the operational. Because if you don't, it's quite possible that some of our board members will walk into the operational and they think that they are in charge. Actually, in a truest sense, the board and the chairman is not really in charge. We are there to ensure that the work is done properly, effectively, and that, um, collectively, we represent, um, if you like, the, uh, organization. But I like to believe that the true person in charge is actually the ED. Because he's the one who's putting all the heart and time and everything. And in many cases, sacrifice to do this work, even though they are paid, but they are paid really not very much, you know that, right? So we want to respect that and encourage them to take charge and not overstep our boundaries. And finally, to secure good governance and compliance. I think that is a very important job. Because the reputation, the image of the organization, uh, is so important, especially when we are trying to raise funds for the public. And as, uh, our good friend Gerard said earlier on, we are all stewards. And so to me, that is important. We want to ensure that the public trust us, uh, the donors trust us, government trust us, beneficiaries trust us, and we all trust each other to do a good job.
The other part is the compliance, governance, they're all the same. And whether it is the Singapore Kindness Movement or the Prison Fellowship or all the other nonprofit that I sit on, we have to ensure one common standard. I don't think we can say that because we are this, we are kindness, therefore be kind to us. We don't have to, you know, comply. I mean, we can't say that, right? So we're all the same.
Uh, Dr Wan, thank you very much for sharing. And finally, I'd like to invite Dr E as the Charity Council Chairman. Would you like to share with us the views on the importance of charity governance for this sector and the rationale for the latest exercise in refining the Code of Governance? Thank you.
Before I answer that question, um, I just add on to what Dr Wan has just said. Uh, I visited charities, uh, in number of other countries, in the western countries especially, and even in Japan and elsewhere. And what is very telling is you get to meet the ED or the CEO. And you spend a lot of hours talking to them about the charity. You only meet the chairman or the president over cocktails. In Singapore, it's quite the opposite. And the danger of having the chairman or the president has a term limit, especially to be personified with a charity, is when there's a changeover, the charity is weakened. It really depends on that. So be very careful. I think what Dr Wan says is, is absolutely right. It's the ED and the, and, or the, the executive that is the important individual. The other thing is in the presentation, uh, I know the tone of voice, I don't want you to feel that having an advisor is wrong. If you are very fortunate enough to have someone of great influence that can support your cause, but because of his or her position, it's not good for the individual to have an official position in your charity. Uh, the person can be, uh, approached to be named as advisor. And, and therefore, it's not involved legally in, in the, in, in your charity and so forth. So whatever happens, he's, he or she is protected. But the usefulness is the connection that this individual brings to you. It could be a member of parliament, it could be, you know, someone that is influential in that particular field, a renowned medical person and so forth. So don't be put off, but seventeen advisors is a bit too many, yeah? Pick carefully your one advisor that is useful to you. Okay, coming to the question, if you look at the structure of the charity's governance, it's, it's done in such a way that if you apply it all, it helps the organization to be well-run. And growingly, our donors are becoming informed donors. And the Charities Council has launched the Transparency Index. And, uh, donors are encouraged to check to the website to see who has been listed as being transparent. And that will give them their confidence to donate to these charities, especially as the number of charities keep on growing. So that's very important. But I also admit, because I myself, as an individual, has been involved uh, with very large charities and smallish charity. And it is a challenge. I, I, I mean, I've been involved with smaller charities where I went in there to, uh, incorporate good governance, starting with internal controls, processes and procedures. And I brought, brought in an ED that is very good, but unfortunately over enthusiastic and tried to do it too quickly. And what we faced was massive vaccinations because a lot of this staff has been there. Uh, very low wages, but out of a belief and just doing things their own sweet old way. Uh, sure, there's a lot of inefficiencies, lots of payments with no supporting vouchers and things. But when you try and change the system, these people get very upset if you do it too quickly. So be careful of it. It's not easy to implement good governance. It is a journey and you've got to take it, uh, in stages. But it's absolutely critical to give confidence to the public. You have to establish that trust between your stakeholders and yourself.
Uh, thank you very much, Dr E. So as you can see, stewardship, trust, transparency, all these are very important things for us. Now, I think to make this panel discussion a little bit different from the previous one, I'd like to open out to the floor for one to two people to express their views on what we've just said so far. Any, any, anyone, please?
I want to echo, uh, you know, I may say Yap's views about, uh, the difference between a society as or corporation. CCS, we have operated as a society for many years. And last year, we decided to corporatize. Now, I, I can tell you really this, that, um, since corporatization, uh, we find that, you know, we, we become very careful about, uh, doing many things, which we were really much, much more relaxed as a society. Now, the Society's Act, uh, is, uh, about this take, you know. The Companies' Act, uh, is like this, you know? And it's a very detailed, uh, document, uh, which, which spells out many, many things which you can actually run far off. And worse, it prescribes the penalties that, uh, will be imposed if you do or don't do certain things, you know? So we end up in a situation here where, you know, everything you do, you've got to ask a lawyer or the secretary, hey, can we do this? This resolution doesn't sound quite right. So there's actually a lot of, uh, there are a lot of additional, uh, uh, responsibilities and, and effort and maybe trouble, you know, that comes to you when you are CLG, you know, because now you, there are, uh, you know, many, many things that you need to be careful about. Uh, which brings me to the, uh, survey, which Dr Isabel said. No, she, there are a few, couple, a hundred-plus organizations which, I mean, were surveyed. But I was wondering whether, uh, the business organization type, whether it kind of drove their compliance, you know, with disclosure, with the number of directors, with, uh, information that is provided, you know? As a society, as a society, maybe they, they don't feel the need. But as a CL, as a corporation governed by the Companies' Act, then even if the Charities' Act don't say anything, there may be something in the Companies' Act which compels you to do this, you know? So I think it's, uh, uh, we're already talking about two, two pieces of legislation here. Charities' Act as well as the Companies' Act, that, that would, uh, that would probably make you do things that, uh, you have to do.
Chairman, can I respond to this?
Please, yeah.
Maybe pending that, I think there's another question there. Maybe you can pass the mic. Let me answer this question first. Uh, interesting that you bring it up that, uh, your board members feel a bit, uh, you know, a bit restrictive once they become corporatized. Uh, actually, the they get scared. Uh, which is probably a, a very good and natural outcome. Uh, meaning to say that a lot of people then are aware that there are rules out there, which otherwise they think that, you know, as a society, there are no rules. It's not true. Society, in fact, because the Society's Act is so thin, you can actually, you know, uh, flip through it. I think there's less than a hundred provisions, whereas the Companies' Act, there are something like five, six hundred provisions and subsidiary legislations. Um, bearing that in mind, it means that the Society's Act relies on common law relating to how the society should function. And because you don't have a legal entity, whatever you do because you're so relaxed, you may actually step outside of the bounds of, uh, the usual governance. And bear in mind that, you know, the Charities' Act imposes the same level of governance on you, whether you are a company or whether you are a society. Doesn't matter. So I think the, the outcome is good. In the sense that now you know that, hey, I'm a director of a company, I have director's duty. So long as you are not taking money for yourself, so long as you are not breaching your fiduciary duty, so long as you are not having a conflict of interest whereby you actually, you know, cause the charity to cause the charity to contract with your sister's company or your wife's company, and then you don't disclose it, then you know that you are staying on the right path. Because those things incur personal liability on the director. And in the society situation, you also have personal liability, whether or not you have a company or not. So in that kind of situation, I think the discipline is good. Now, the fact that you then start questioning in your board members that get scared to say, look, same effect, can we get a lawyer to look at this, whether it's okay or not? Would be a good outcome in the sense that then you are more careful. You want to make sure that whatever you do is above board. And I think that's a culture that we want to inculcate in a lot of charities, that you want to make sure that whatever you do is above board. Don't try to do things and sweep it under the carpet thinking that, oh, there is no such provision in the Society's Act, so I don't care. But a lot of people don't understand that, you know, why when I stepped, ten years ago, when I joined Rensselaer, first of all, say, how come, you know, this committee is running like that? And what happens? First question I asked, do we have DNO policy? Society cannot buy. Then you're screwed, okay? So the moment you have a company, you can get the insurance company to offer you. So first thing, no matter how big or small your organisation, protection of the directors, I'm very risk adverse. My company, you know, my law firm, being a US law firm, says, look, any organisation you join must have DNO policy. Because we can afford you to be sued and then, you know, we have liability issue. So buy a small policy. Half a million, one million, the premium a year is not a lot, very little. But you have the protection and you have peace of mind. So have that in place. I think you have another question there, yeah, the lady.
I think before the question, just to add on to what Waimeng has said. Things can go wrong in any organisation. And just bear in mind, the one thing that could possibly save you is documentation. So whether or not you are regulated by Companies' Act or whatever, is whatever you do, make sure you have detailed documentations. Because memories are very short. And when you have changed your personnel, changed your board members, three years down the road, and if your minutes are not well documented, nobody actually remembers how that decision was arrived at. And everybody will struggle. So proper documentation, take the effort to do it. Whatever you do, have supportive documents, that's your best protection. Because you never can tell. When trouble brews, it could well be three years after you have stepped down. But involving the period for which you were still on the board. And I can guarantee you, you can't remember actually what was said, what was done at that point in time. And really is that copies of the minutes and the documentation is going to save the day for you.
My question, you talked about the lawyers. I'm going to talk about the accountants. Because we have a very good charities accounting standards. But many of the commercial accountants don't know that. And they sort of force the charities to go with RAP and so on and so forth, because that's what they're comfortable with. And we have very clear buckets in which we put designated under, and all of that's too cumbersome for a commercial accountant. So I wanted to ask the panel your position or your thoughts on that. And I'm just so glad also that the whole company limited by guarantee topic has come up. Because back fifteen years, I registered one of the first charities as a company registered by guarantee. Because COC then wouldn't allow that organisation, saying there's no need for a shelter organisation in Singapore. And that's where I found out that there is a section that I could go with. And that was the CLG way. And today, of course, Habitat for Humanity is doing a pretty good job in Singapore. So I'm glad that, and I would highly say that it's a great vehicle for organisations to be both, from a charity act point of view and a company's point of view, to be a good governance entity. It just does allow. So back to my question of accountants and charities accounting standards.
The reason why auditors don't like you to apply that is that they have to learn another set of rules. And really, realistically speaking, fees paid by charities to the auditors are really pittance. It's just not worth their while. Now, something that you may not realise it, why do they feel it that way? Charities are considered as of public interest. So the audit file of an auditor's, when they audit, when they have a charity as a client, actually comes under review by ACRRA officers. And if it's not in compliance with the international auditing standards, which requires a lot of work to be done in order to comply with it, they are really in trouble, they could even be suspended. So for them to do a full set of audit working papers in compliance, gone are the days where unless they are really, really altruistic, that any audit firms can do a proper audit and be quite happy to charge you a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. In the old days, yes. But now, that's out of the question. It's just not worth their while to do it. So I urge charities, pay a realistic fees. And in the process of auditing your organisation, they may well get to know you well enough and subscribe to your cause and donate some of those fees back. Don't deprive them of the benefit of enjoying the tax deduction. Have confidence that your auditors, at the end of the day, will be won over by what you are doing. Don't slice it and force the donation on them at the front end and just say, sorry, I know they'll pay you so much, I'm a charity. But I think it's about time that I re-look at the charities accounting standards again. Because there are some anomalies now, especially with the change in various things in the Code of Governance, as well as the new regulations for the anti-money laundering compliance as well. So it's a bit dated and has to be re-looked again.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's important, and I must give credit to my accountant here. She's really here. I asked her to be here today because I think for a lot of charities, we don't have the luxury of hiring someone who is a qualified accountant. And I'm very, very fortunate to entice her to come to a low-paying job with other kinds of benefits, you know? So I think a trained accountant is important. And I think days have gone by whereby we say that we can't afford one. And you are a medium-sized agency, you have to make sure you have the funds to hire an accountant. Because with my accountant, the working relationship with the auditor is very fantastic. Because they understand the language. We don't, we only understand the counselling language. So, you know, if your accountant is able to talk to the auditor, actually, the accounting period is very, very fast and smooth.
Yeah, I'll add on to this. Especially if you are a charity that receives subvention from the government. Invest in having a good accountant that is well versed in cost accounting. Who can calculate the true cost of your programmes, right down to per capita cost, and provide a convincing argument to the relevant ministry that is giving you the subvention or the subsidy. Very often, you don't get what you well deserve because you are not capable of producing the figures that is convincing enough to government to say that my cost of providing the service per capita is X dollars. So invest in an accountant, and especially one that is a member of CMA, that is well trained in. No, in all seriousness, because the emphasis is very much on cost accounting and cost management.
I'd like to add a couple of things here. In 1973, I was a lawyer. And I incorporated a number of GLCs even way back then. Because even then, as a young lawyer, I thought that the requirements under the Companies' Act appeared to me then to be much more stringent than just the Society's Act. Even though I understood then as now, that of course, it's also governed by common law. I'm also very fortunate and lucky and blessed because at the kindness movement, I have an accountant, fully qualified accountant, who also happened to be a lawyer, two rolled in one. So what can I say? We have the benefit of both.
Okay, thank you. So now we are going to do the poll question one. Let us see. Okay, the question is, with the refinements to the code, what assistance would be useful to assist your organisation in complying with the guidelines? Now, thirty-eight point four percent of people, and now it's thirty-five point seven, says they need help. Right, I think you are very normal. If you say you don't need help, probably we won't be here today. Yeah. I can see that you are quite specific, you need more toolkits for reference. About almost forty, now about half of fifty percent, you see, the vote keeps changing, it's roughly fifty percent. And then fifteen point seven percent like to have more training sessions. And twenty point five percent need board recruitment, when a threat, please note. Yeah, twenty point nine percent. So I think it is an overwhelming ninety percent that says that, yes, you need some form of help. And we agree, I think we are looking to this and provide some form of help. So now, what I'm going to do is that we have actually very exciting topics. There are three areas that we intend to discuss. The first area is drivers of charity governance and the future. And then the second area is board renewal and succession planning. And finally, is the board and management relationship. So as you can see, we have quite a bit to go through. And what I'll do is, I would probably weigh lighter on the panel so that the floor has got more time to actually add the views, yeah? So first question, on the charity governance and the future. Now, the question is, what are the steps taken by your charity to ensure that your governance practices comply with the guidelines indicated in the Code of Governance? So perhaps we'd like to start with Dr Wan?
When I became chairman of the Prison Fellowship, one of the first things that we did was to, of course, ensure that we have an audit committee. And then we found an auditor, an external auditor, who was very happy to join that committee. And because of his experience, we decided to do an internal audit. In fact, that internal audit was so comprehensive, and we found a number of holes in our organisation. I just spoke to my ED who was here just now. And he said that we are still working on fulfilling the requirements that he himself commended to us, that we need to do better in a number of areas. So that's really very key. You need to look at your organisation in a very hard-nosed way. Don't worry about who is going to be embarrassed. We are all not perfect. And try to set the ship in order by getting an internal audit done as comprehensively as you can.
Mr Yip, would you like to share?
Not so much to share, but actually, I got the questions popping up on the screen there. I thought some of them may be relevant to this whole question about governance. I think one of these questions was interesting in the sense that, the one with the eight votes. In this smart Singapore, how is board meeting attendance defined? Need to be in the room or can connect remotely? I think you are right, you know, we are now using all these gadgets. Literally, I think board members can attend board meetings remotely and contribute. But don't make that a practice. I think there's a need to have physical meeting to interact with your management and the other board members so that you can get a feel about what the charity is doing. If you really can't attend, then, you know, remotely, you can log in and contribute. And for those meetings that you really cannot attend, even remotely, give your views in advance. I think the board paper should be circulated in advance. If you have strong views about it, write to the board, write to the secretary, these are my views, please add it for me. So I think those are proper governance. And sometimes it may touch on an issue which you have expertise on, and the other board members may not. So it's good to give your views. So that question, very easily answered, yes, you can participate. Video conference, telephone conference, just dial in, it's okay.
Sorry, I just add into this. To me, I feel it's part of the governance process with regards to meetings. And in most of the charities that I've been involved with, unfortunately, so little is invested in the backroom. And you don't get, you meet quarterly, and you don't get a copy of the minutes until, maybe if you're lucky, three days before the next meeting. By which time, you have forgotten the details of the discussion at the previous meeting. You're supposed to approve the minutes of the meeting. That's not good practice. I think the minutes should go out as early as possible, while it's still fresh in people's mind. Because again, I stress the importance of records, minutes, that record how the decision was arrived at. You'll never know in years to come, that document may be your lifesaver. So I think take every effort. I know charities are very short of resources and probably, you know, some volunteers try to take down the notes and produce the minutes. But it doesn't help if the minutes comes in very late.
Okay, how about Christine, I hear?
I think for me, I prefer a face-to-face meeting. Because as it is, the gadget has already been overdrived, you know? They already contact you through all kinds of means. But I think the relationship building between the board and the ED is very important. So if you use gadgets, you don't really get to understand where they are coming from sometimes. So a face-to-face meeting is what I would prefer. So that we at least get to know the board members, they get to know us, then the trust is gained, and it will be easier to work with them.
Okay, the next question for this topic is, findings from the focus group discussion shows that it is important to achieve public awareness on charity governance and guidelines to ensure accountability. Is this necessary? And if so, how can it be achieved? May Dr E?
Yeah, I think that's the reason why the Charity Council launched the Charity Transparency Award. Basically, it gives due recognitions to charities that have met a certain standards in terms of transparency. I know I have quite a number of people that I know in the charity sector that comes up to me and just say, you know, it's extra work, I don't have the resources. And my reply basically is transparency is disclosure. And it's nothing more, there's no additional work other than to disclose what is there or what is not there, and I explain why. So either you have done it or you haven't done it, and it's just a matter of disclosing. That's what transparency is all about. So it doesn't really take a lot more of any additional effort in order to achieve a high level of transparency. The sad part about it, even in the study, Dr Isabel saw, you know, they went through the annual report. And quite rightly, she pointed out, she can only form an opinion based on what has been disclosed. And the sad part is, I'm quite sure a number of these charities have done much more than what was disclosed in the annual report and what you can claim. And they are shortchanging themselves. Because donors is going to log into the website, have a look at their report, and form a conclusion on what has been disclosed, not what you actually have done. So I think the transparency is very important. It will help a charity to build up this relationship with stakeholders and with potential donors.
Thank you. So now, we move on to the board renewal and succession planning. And we'd like to ask the panel, what do you think makes a good board? Is there a good board mix? And what would be some of the possible ways to measure the effectiveness of the board performance? Would you like to start, Christine?
I know I'll be targeted. I think my ideal board would be really, the board members have to understand before they get onto the board, what is our mission and vision. Because if they do not understand it, then when they get onto the board, then, you know, there would be some difficulties in working with the board. Because they may come onto the board with different ideas. You know, I want to champion certain causes, which is maybe, you know... You know, I want to champion certain causes, which is maybe, you know, a direct opposite to what our mission and vision is. So I think that is really important. They have to know what we are doing, what our services and all that. And sometimes with good intention, everybody has a good heart when they get onto the board. But sometimes they don't spend time deciding, is this the board that they want to be? So from my experiences working in a number of VWO, sometimes I absolutely have board members who, oh, on the first day, ask me, what exactly are you doing? You know, and then I was like, oh, okay, yeah. So I think that is important. And the good mix would be people with different expertise. I really feel that it's important, like for example, people with expertise in HR, finance, fundraising, legal, and also other expertise that they bring in. They could be also practitioners in the field, they are experts, like psychiatrists for us or even people with many years of experience. Because our work definitely need this kind of expertise.
If I may just share a bit, you know, in a lot of the charities that I sit on, especially in the health sector, we do need to have a various mix of people. Of course, once in the health sector, you really need people for in the health sector. So we do have a lot of specialist doctors who serve, not on the board, not as advisors, but as subcommittee members of, let's say, the medical advisory committee or some of the other specialised committee that we have. So we do staff people with different skill sets to different committee and they don't need to be on the board. So when you look at our board, our board relatively big, but the subcommittees, we have a lot. And for example, when we were building up the new nursing homes and so on, we do have the very active building committee to look at the building itself, how it should look like. And we have architects and contractors who are sitting on those boards. Now, you've talked about the right mix, I think you do need to have a good mix of various people, ranging the kind of experience that the sector needs. So to that extent, I think you need to have a very effective nominating committee. I think from Isabel's research, not many charities actually have nominating committees. So the nominating committee serves as a sounding board for incoming or interested members. You've got to go out and hunt, literally for people who are interested in the job or you may have to match them such that they may become interested in your charity to serve. And then you could start talking to them, start engaging them. And of course, those people who, when you look at the performance and, you know, after a while, they are not, they are not attending board meetings, I hate it because they're so busy. After one term, you have to think about whether you want to renew them for the next term and so on. So those are the kind of questions that the nominating committee will have to deliberate on a very confidential level and take feedback. And I think that's important and that's normally hated by the chairman of the organisation with certain people who probably have certain connections with the people that they would like to source. The only problem I see in, and this is probably prevalent in almost all organisations, you always go back to your own old boys' network. And that's also a bit of a danger that I see that you only get your friends in. And the moment you have all your friends in, you all think alike. You know, the group think sets in. I have a lot of pet peeve about some organisations, including, you know, some of our ministries where they parachute people. Of their own group people from the same body, from the same camp, you know, and so on. And then, you know, they get all these positions, they all develop a stereotype thinking. They can only think because that's how they got the job. And then they expect that when they have the old succession renewal, they do the same thing again. Oh, I will select the people that, you know, can think along in the same way. I don't want people who will give me different views. And I think that is not very healthy in any organisation. Try to have people with very divergent views. I think that's very healthy for the organisation, challenge you. You don't necessarily need to like that person to get the person on your board. But you need to respect that person for giving an honest view about your organisation and challenge you. Because your views may change and sometimes when I discuss with my son, they say, I'm old school. And the minute when I think back, I say, yeah, I used to say that of my seniors. When I joined any organisation, you're so old school, how can you not think, you know, alternatively? And then my thinking after ten years in an organisation or so becomes set. And I find that, you know, if people give me views, I wouldn't bother, you know, don't bother. But I think that's a wrong thinking. We should be open. And I think that there's some merit in this new charity code about tenure being a kind of benchmark. I think we'll talk about that later, about whether that should be a hardcoded tenure or soft-coded. Not all organisations can accept a hard tenure, okay? Especially you cannot find good replacement chairperson, okay?
I think actually this is part of a question from the floor. It says, one of the challenges facing charities is board renewal. And how do you go about achieving to get people from different expertise to serve? So how do you go about recruiting more than your old boys' network?
Let me suggest what we have been trying to do at the Prison Fellowship. First of all, the Prison Fellowship serves a very diverse community of stakeholders because it's a faith-based organisation with a social service component that's an IPC. And it's a forty-five-year-old organisation. And the first thing we're looking for is people who really believe in the mission. And I think the mission is very well-known, especially among the faith-based people. It's a very key part of the stakeholders. So you've got to believe in the mission. Second, we're looking at representatives from the different stakeholders, churches, inmates themselves, beneficiaries, younger generation, because we need them to continue. People with some history and understanding of, you know, the work. We have seven hundred volunteers. We want somebody from the volunteer stakeholder to be part of it. So when we look at all this, then we start thinking about people. Nomination committee, we're looking at these people. Then we put them through committees first. We don't put them on the board. So they serve a term in a committee. Then in a committee, we can then assess how interested they are, what kind of contribution. And of course, gender, we are also concerned that it should be mixed. And so we have all the good mix in that way.
Yeah, thank you very much. I think now we can have the next poll question flashed up. What are some of the difficulties your organisation faces in board renewal and succession planning? So you can see very clearly seventy point nine percent let suitable new members who can maintain the board's culture. And then we have reluctance to use board matching resources. And then six percent, it says two-year reappointment policy deters members who want to serve. Finally, ten percent, my charity is a small charity, is unable to stand out. So I sense that this is still an area that requires quite a bit of examination and to see how best to help. Maybe just a quick one for the panel to explore. It says two years reappointment is a deterrent. What do you think?
No, I think this question comes back to the previous comment about the challenge of getting board members. The responsibility of a board member is the same for any charities. So whether an individual chooses to serve in charity A or charity Z, the responsibility is the same. The real question you should be asking yourself, why is it that these people is willing to serve charity X and not my charity? Are you doing enough to promote your charity, its cause? And therefore to attract these people to say, yeah, it's worthy of joining your charity? So like what Dr Wan is just saying, you know, is really getting people who are supportive of your cause. And he starts them off at the committee level to assess them before making them board members. But I think it's all got to do with branding. So no matter what your size, the small ones is, take the effort in terms of transparency and your annual report to promote yourself and your cause. People don't serve organisation, they only serve causes. So make sure your cause is well-known and there will always be people out there that will be supportive of your cause. Quite clearly, causes involving children has a much easier way. Most of the NGOs involving charities don't have a problem in getting support or donations. But some other charities may have a harder time to promote their cause itself.
Thank you. Okay, now we move on to the last topic, which is the board and management relation. And question is, what is the role of the board? What is the role of the management? And how do the roles differ from one another? I think we have Christine, please.
I think we really have to differentiate between the roles. And I think with the experiences over the years, I sometimes feel that the roles are not very clear even to our board members. Although we do orientation programme and all that, sometimes, of course, I would say that it's a positive point. They are so passionate, you know, they want to get involved in every single work that we are doing. But sometimes it is difficult because how they set the directions without understanding the, actually, the work that we are actually doing can be a hindrance, although they are very passionate. So I think definitely, you know, I'm thankful to the Code of Governance because when it started, I used that as my guiding point. I said, hey, hey, you know, look at the Code of Governance and this is my role, this is your role. Sometimes it's quite effective, sometimes not so effective. Sometimes they will cool off for a while and then they come back. So I think it is a challenge. We really need to understand the roles. But I will give credit to them, they really have a good heart. Many of them who sit on various boards of various charities. But sometimes really the role has been done clearly that people do understand that they are policymakers. We are the one implementing the services and we understand the ground very well. What are the challenges?
Thank you. Any other comments from the panel?
I do have, I think when I was listening to this about the conflict between management and the board, right? And one of these interesting question was, you know, a lot of the board members tells the management, please prepare a lot of papers for them to look at. And all these committee papers become a lot of time. Can you strike a balance between the two? So unfortunately, I think there's a lot of, you know, if you have board members who want certain answers, undoubtedly, the management have to start preparing and researching the background. But I think we do need to strike a balance in the sense that board members should not be unreasonable in terms of asking for board papers which are not so directly relevant to the functioning of the board or devising certain so-called internal procedures which are, the cost of it, or the benefit of it, doesn't, you know, is immaterial. That the cost of doing it, you are just soaking up resources from management to achieve a very small benefit. So you need to look at the overall picture and say, look, do you are charity? Are we going to use so much resources to do certain things just because of, you know, some of these risk factors? And you need to rank them and say, look, which are the ones that you need to tackle first? Those are the ones you should enjoy priority in getting a research done or some board papers done on what are the procedures to be implemented. I think lawyers lag behind accountants. Accountants are very good at inventing new accounting standards. Every time an accounting standard comes about, we all scratch our head and say, oh, what is this new thing about? Is there new policies we need to change? And the finance department gets into a flurry of activities trying to say, look, I think we need to do certain things to comply with this new accounting standard. And unfortunately, the AC chair, if he's up to date with sort of things, to say, oh, I need this to comply with this and this rule is coming next year or year after next, can you start looking at it? So all these procedures and processes will involve time and resources of the company. And the worst one, I think the most recent one that I've seen is about income recognition now. And you have to start thinking about, oh, how do we recognise income? And the worst thing is that, you know, a nurse runs a nursing home and then you've got to start thinking, people via charity, a lot of them can't pay, right? Those who can't pay, and you know that they cannot pay, you don't recognise them as income. So it's a lot of effort to go and look at all the hundreds of patients and say, who can or cannot pay? Or, oh, yeah, I get this standard and therefore this portion, I don't recognise as income. But what are we going to achieve, you know, at the end of the day? We're going to write off, we're going to subsidise these people. Why is it from the government or from donations? But the amount of work that the finance department could do to get that number, to say, this is our income. It is not commensurate with trying to tell the public, this is my income. Because there is a whole chunk of them who can't pay and this is ignored. Because they are not real income. Anyway, in the charity, we are going to subsidise these people. So I don't understand why the accountants create such rules which applies to charities. And I have to ask Gerald to start thinking about this and say, maybe we make an exception of this for charities. So these are the kind of tensions that we have between management and board. And the board wants to follow the rules, but the rules are created not to, not just to apply to charity, but apply across the board, right? Unfortunately, the charities are caught in these things and we have to follow. So you've got to bear in mind that this tension, you need to just surface it openly and discuss. And if the finance department says, I'm sorry, I can't do this, I'm shorthanded. Then you need to think about ways to solve it, hire more people or outsource it. I'm quite sure some people will be willing to help in this area, but I don't have all the answers. But just to raise some of these issues, we need to talk openly and see the solutions.
I think Dr Wan likes to, yeah?
I've been thinking about this and I think that lawyers are historical. I mean, we always go back to the past. Accountants are very tense people, they're hysterical all the time. I think that's really what it is. But I said just now and I repeat, I think we should let the EDs do his or her job and let the board members do their job. They must be very clear about what their jobs are. I don't think that we are called to be board members or chairman to run the organisation. We should let the ED, select the right ED, empower that person to run it. That person should have a vision and if the vision is, of course, to be shared with the board and we see it with them, with him or her, support him or her. I think that's the only way to go. Because otherwise, you're going to have staff members having to look to two leaders. I mean, you can't have two tigers in the woods, in the forest. I mean, one of them will eat the other one up. So let the ED be the person, I really think so. And then, you know, hopefully it will stay long. But again, every time you change ED, there will be some change of style and, you know, and so on. That's fine. But don't let the chairman do that or don't let the board do that. It doesn't work.
Okay, because we are running out of time, so we'll be speeding out the poll questions. Can we have the next poll question, please? Okay, the next poll question, as you can see, do board members of your organisation interfere with the daily operations? As a result, created tensions with the management. And wow, okay. It's about seventy percent said yes, right? And twenty-three percent have already given up, say they can't do anything. But interestingly, a small percentage said no conflict created. I think that's very well managed, forty-two percent. So the twenty-three percent, I think you need to reexamine because the three point six and forty-one, forty-five percent somehow are able to manage it, yeah? So maybe Dr Yi, you'd like to comment on this, yeah?
I think that's the reason why we have the Code of Governance. It's a journey, it's a journey. I will sidetrack slightly because there's a very interesting question here. With eight votes, it says, it's encouraging to see funding put into gathering feedbacks on the challenges faced by the sector. Can you share what are the plans to support the sector after identifying the issues? So we identify all these issues and the effort of SSI. For example, they have organised courses for training of board members. They team up with Singapore Institute of Directors and do the courses. And it gets very generous subsidies from the VCF, the VWO Capability Fund. So there are a lot of causes that are available to assist you all to train. There are also VCF to help you all with shared services for some of these services which the...
which the smaller V W Os may lack the the capacity for. So there's a lot of it out there. Uh do log into the Charities Council website and and you you can see the applications for the V C F and so forth. So we identify it and then we try and find uh and collaborate with other parties to make sure that assistance is being provided. But from our side of it is obviously the the V C F that is available.
So right, may I also add that we have C N P L, the Centre for Nonprofit Leadership? And I think I think they are also represented here and I think they do uh give very good uh consultative uh advice and actual uh training for 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 the leadership development and 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 board matching and 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 they can even diagnose the health of your organization in terms of, you know, what's going on. So I think you should knock at their doors as well, Centre for Nonprofit Leadership.
Yeah, they are here, Winifred is here.
Thank you, yeah.
Winifred.
Yeah, yeah.
When 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 I started Council for Third Age, almost every alternate years I have a renewal of one-third of my board. And I've always been knocking at the door, C N P L, who helped me to get really first-class uh board members, uh including the E D of National Library Board and so forth. I could rattle off a a fantastic list of of great board members.
Okay, uh now can we flash the last poll question, please? Okay, the last post question says, what are some of the challenges your organization is facing in differentiating the roles of the board and management? So thirty-one point three percent cited poor communication, lack of understanding of daily operations. And then some indicated that uh small charity board members need to double out to assume management roles. Some of them say board members and management unaware of the need for clarity, eighteen point five percent. Maybe let's take one of them, uh which is small charity board members have to double out. I think some of the smaller charities have to have this. Would any of the board men, uh panel like to comment on this?
Yeah, maybe maybe I'll I'll contribute to this. Um I sit on both large and small charities as well and um the problem with the with the with small charities is small resources. And small resources means that, you know, the board members who are committed to the core sometimes have to chip in to help out the management. Um but the more that the board members get involved in management activities, the more the, what is it, the non uh uh impartial they get in the sense that the board is supposed to kind of like have a supervisory role over the management. But when they get into management, they cannot be supervising themselves. So you get into this muddled situation whereby you 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 tend to lose your independence. And I think that's that's a dangerous trend. You should try as far as possible, split that role so that the board always have a supervisory function. Otherwise, when the board assumes some of these things and you do it and you lead on, you know, another board member who is not involved start criticizing, you know, the 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 way they have done certain things. And then as a board, you may have to recuse yourself from that decision and you become part of management and you're not receiving a fee and so on. So it it makes it very complicated. So I think to that extent, as far as possible, try to split. If you can't, then I think you need to uh to limit your your role in management um uh to the extent of just giving supervisory advice on certain projects, uh as opposed to getting involved in the day-to-day. Once you get involved day-to-day, I think sometimes it's, you might as well become the the E D yourself. Get somebody else to sit on the board to check on you. I think that may be a a more suitable solution. Because most, I find that most charities, when they start small, it is really the founder or the founding members who have the most passion and they want to run things. And then they start recruiting people on the board and they are also on the board, right? So you have this mixture of both board member and management sitting at the same uh small charity and that creates a bit of attention. And I think coming back to Doctor Wan's point about those faith-based organization and uh I I I see it in the newspaper. I see it in some of the organizations that I've attended. Um once you have one of those leaders there who 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 uh who is well respected within that community, nobody challenges that. So that kind of thinking is even even worse, that you dare not challenge because he's supposed to be, you know, uh the leader that you trust. So because it's faith-based, your faith is placed on him, so much so that you don't even question uh the things that he does. And sometimes he may even question you and say, why are you challenging me? And you have seen newspaper reports about, you know, one big organization and 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 the guy questioned and then he was ridiculed and then he was some, he was sued. And then after many years, he he was vindicated. But the process of anybody doing that is 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 very agonizing. So to that extent, I think any, I think all the more the faith-based organizations should strive to distinguish the two roles prominently. I am means, uh I don't mean my words here. I think it's very, very important. Otherwise, that whole organization risk being hijacked by that founder and nobody dared to question him. And the only way to question him is you resign. And the guy raised money and, you know, there's no governance at all for that kind of organization. It's very sad. It's happening in our society. It's happening in various societies outside of uh uh Singapore as well. But I think we need to wake up to that fact. I think we need to monitor this kind of uh very unhealthy development. I think we need to check. Okay?
Uh thank you. So I think now we'd like to open out to the floor. We can take up the two questions. Uh you know, if you have any comments, observations that you'd like to share with us. Anyone, please? Just raise your hand and then, yeah.
My question is, as well as trying to cultivate um existing board members and trying to attract people that have been in the sector for a while, how can we as a sector try and cultivate a new pipeline of really energized, innovative board members coming up? I guess, um as as you mentioned, you tend to see a lot of people circulating around lots of different boards, moving from one to the other after ten years perhaps. Um so how can we really actively try and engage in and cultivate a new pipeline?
I think this is the realm where C N P L actually works and scour round for uh potential uh individuals that can serve on the boards. I I think there's a a very large pool of potential volunteers that has not yet been tapped and that's from the expats community. And the expats community in in many cases uh do have, for example, the spouses. The usually they come, one spouse will be doing a project, working and traveling. The other spouse will want to contribute to the society and is available uh as a volunteer. So I don't think we have fully tapped that. And that can be very useful because they bring in perspectives from elsewhere. And that will open up the mind uh of of board members as well of of the management staff. So Winifred. Ah, you know each other, yeah. No, I I think it's not not tapped. Uh I've visited quite a number of 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 charities where the Japanese Association, the women's section has been very active. And I'm really amazed at the contribution that they have made and brought so much joy to the beneficiaries. Uh but I think more can be done. There there there's so many uh experts in Singapore that we could really work hand in hand. And I would love to see that because we really, in order for our third sector in Singapore to grow, we need more interaction. Not all of us can afford to do study trips overseas. So it's good to have people who have served overseas to bring the experience to us here and we benefit from that sharing, yeah.
I attended one of this um session sometime ago and I learned from Doctor E that there is a difference between a board member for private company and a charity. There's a bit difference. If if I understand correctly. Okay, I what I'm trying to ask is this because there's a Doctor Isabel Sim. She mentioned about should we train the board members? If we require them to be trained, there will be probably lesser people want to become a board member of the charity. But if we don't train them, um will they know what they are supposed to so-called do? All right, especially if they are coming from the private sector. Many of them come from a private sector. They may behave like a private sector board of director instead of a charity board of director, which there may be some differences in there, right?
Firstly, there are two aspects of it. One is responsibility as a director. And that responsibility, because it's a C L G, it comes under the Companies Act, so it doesn't differ at all. Uh the weight on the shoulder of a director, whether it's a private company or a charity or C L G is the same. What you're alluding to is the management of a charity. It requires slightly different thinking from management of a commercial for profit entity. So that one, yeah, I think they need to, that's why you mentioned about orientation for board members, what your charity actually do. Uh the 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 mission, the vision, uh how do you do you plan to run your charities to the maximum benefit of beneficiaries and so forth? A very good example, uh when I was in the N K F. And we started off with our understanding that it provides dialysis to save life. But after some discussion there about our board members that came on board, it was very important to tell the board that we have changed our whole vision of it. It is not just to save life, but to give this patient a life. And it's a very fundamental difference from just keeping people alive and giving people a life. So once they subscribe to it, they are they are the mind opened up, they begin to think of ancillary services. So a very poor person who can't afford to come in for free dialysis, our social worker will investigate that. What happens then to the family? This is the breadwinner, two-roomer, unable to work now. Do they have school-going aged children that needs help? What's the spouse doing? But the initial thinking that it's just to save life, so you're coming for a dialysis, I've done my job, thank you very much, goodbye, wish you all the best. So educating your board members on this, the 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 purpose of your charity is very important. So that goes beyond the responsibility of being a director. In the in the in the for-profit one, it's very straightforward. It's bottom line driven, how do you increase your profits, quite different K P I's.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Uh, okay, okay, just one more question.
We hear the legal side, the accounts side. What about the fundraising? We are quite interested to know, uh what are your comments and what are the directions, guideline for the charity organization?
I I don't, the rules are out there for fundraising, uh where it's restricted to thirty percent expenditure for the whole year, uh not to exceed. Um so I'm not quite sure what exactly you're alluding to, but if you're saying that, sorry? Oh, raising money for foreign, uh well, the the rules in existence is there that you have to apply for a permit uh from the charities, you need to get the minister approval and so. And then under that, there's a rule of the eighty-twenty, under the current provision, that even if you are licensed to raise funds for overseas project, you can only remit twenty percent out. Um don't ask me why and so forth, but that's the current rule. If your question is, if whether the rule is going to be revisited, I my answer is I don't know. However, I think apart from raising money to send overseas, so just imagine during the tsunami, even the Red Cross, they raised a lot of money to send to Aceh, they also needed to have that approval to send the money out. Because otherwise, the rules will not allow them to send the entire sum out. So that's the current rule, but I'm not sure uh whether that would be revisited or not. Um I think probably not in the near future because as you can see, especially in the context, most of the organization that would raise money for overseas will be religious-based organizations because they do do a lot of mission work outside. Sadly, under the current environment, when you talk about terrorist financing, it also tends to be linked back to religious base. Um all you need is one or two to cause fear in in relaxing the rules over this. So I don't foresee in the near future a revision to this rule. There'll, if anything, there'll be closer monitoring. Just make sure that none of the money raised actually goes for the wrong purposes. So you remember uh the the new rule effective first January this year, twenty seventeen. Any expenditure relating to overseas projects and all that, at the end of the year, to disclose um what was spent and where and for what, yeah. But to permit you to raise money and send a whole lot overseas, unless the environment changes, I I don't see a relaxation anytime soon. Uh sadly, sadly, the terrorists have always been using religious-based organization for their activities, yeah. And they don't discriminate and say what type of religious organization, so it's fair treatment.
Okay.
Yes, uh wait, wait, the our regulator has something to say. Shifting the buck now. I'm not a regulator, I'm.
Uh we'd like to invite M C C I to make a statement.
Hi, uh Hui Ting here, so Deputy Commissioner. So maybe I just clarify the rules so that there's clarity on what the current rule is about, okay? Um if you are raising funds for foreign charitable purposes, the first thing is you need a permit from the uh C O C's office. So the C O C will uh approve whether or not you may remit those funds overseas, may carry out a fundraising appeal for foreign charitable purposes. Okay, so the moment you apply for a permit, there's what be termed as the eighty-twenty rule that applies. Okay, what is the eighty-twenty rule? The eighty-twenty rule means that for every hundred dollars you raise, eighty dollars uh has to be retained for a local purpose. Only twenty dollars may be remitted overseas, okay? But there are uh circumstances and grounds for us to waive that eighty-twenty rule. And then many times we have waived it, okay? So for example, for immediate disaster relief. So Red Cross, um when they raise funds for disaster relief work itself, that is being waived, okay? So that applies to any organization that is raising funds for foreign causes. The other is that we consider waiver is when the appeal is what is termed as a private appeal. What is a private appeal? A private appeal is when it's amongst your communities who know each other. So for example, among your your friends itself, within your society of a restricted community of a couple of hundreds persons itself. And you're not doing any, dealing with any public appeals. So for example, you're not putting on the internet, not crowdfunding on those matters itself. Or neither are you putting out an advert out there on the news or magazines. Those are what we term as public. But if your community that you're raising funds among is a private appeal, those are also grounds that we consider waiver. So often in religious organizations or small religious organizations, a small community itself, those are sometimes considered as private appeals. And on those grounds of private appeals, we uh consider waiver of the eighty-twenty rule. But do you need to apply for the permit? Yes, you still need to apply for the permit. So I hope there's some clarity on this particular requirement. Thank you.
Uh so it's not to discourage good work, sir. I'm going to say something that recently I my sister is involved in one of these missionary effort in one African countries. So when we heard that they needed twenty-two sewing machines to start enterprise and it costs ten thousand U S. So just, we heard, they didn't ask us for the money. So ten of us got together, each of us put a thousand dollars there and sent it over. So small, small ways you can do it lah, huh? Yeah. So if you do have some of these smaller projects, don't hesitate, just among yourself. It is very easy to do, very quick and very satisfying. Ten, twenty friends who just share it, each come out a bit of money and then you can send it. And there are remittance officers around uh Penansula and all that for sending money to Myanmar, to all these places. You can find out about it, you want to know more. No, I didn't. To be fair, the reason why I say that is I'm aware, I I travel a lot in the region. I do see a lot of work that needs to be done. Uh and if it would be good for Singaporeans to extend our compassion beyond the shores of Singapore for all these little little things.
Thank you, panelists, for sharing with us your valuable insights. Let's give our panelists a big round of applause. We invite our panelists to return to their seats. Thank you. We hope that all of you have benefited from the panel discussion and enjoyed the interactive polling session with the use of pigeon hole. Ladies and gentlemen, it gives me great pleasure to invite Doctor Noel Tegel, F C M A C G M A Executive Vice President, Academics Management Accounting Association International Certified Professional Accountant. Academics Management Accounting Association International Certified Professional Accountants, on stage for the closing address. Dr. Noel, please.
Good afternoon, just a few words. Uh, thank you for coming. Uh, for me, your presence is very encouraging that you have an interest in the very valuable work that is being done and two types of valuable work that is being done. Uh, one is research. Uh, I commend the researchers, uh, every good researcher has four things that it does. They ask the right questions, they ask the right questions to the right people, ensure they get the right answers. They faithfully record the things that they uh, have heard without any bias. And then they derive insights for those things so that we are able to use those insights. And I think, um, coming from a research background myself, uh, this is research of the highest quality and I commend the researchers and I commend, uh, Singapore for doing, providing us with such research. For me, good research also speaks to the existential issues of the communities in which, uh, the researchers exist. And therefore charities and the work that charities do are very important areas for research. I mean, charities for me have been, uh, I come originally from a country called Ghana. And charities have been very helpful in ensuring that the quality of life uh, in places like Ghana and other African countries have been raised. Secondly, uh, it's also because they have been good delivery mechanisms, particularly in places where profits cannot be made and in places where governments do not have the ability to do so. So these are quite important, uh, issues that charities should do. And my commendation also goes, uh, to the researchers and to you who have participated in helping to open this space up. The thing that, uh, excited me the most on this particular, uh, town hall is that notion of governance. Uh, and governance is important, uh, but sometimes governance, uh, can be seen only as compliance and conformance to rules. Uh, in the work that we do at SEMA, we argue that governance should cover two spaces. One is performance, the other is compliance. And this is the way in which I explain it to people. If you have a car, you need a brake and you need an accelerator. The accelerator is often seen as the one that gives you freedom to speed. The brake is the one that's, uh, uh, is seen often as restrictive. But I ask you this question, which car would you drive fast? A car with good brakes or a car without a brake? And the, 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 the paradox of that is that you need the two working together. You need a brake in order to be able to accelerate. But if you use the brake to prevent acceleration, that is also counterproductive to the way in which cars exist. So I'd encourage you to see the conformance and the performance as working hand to, in hand. That same thing applies to how manage, uh, management and governance works together. So we tend to see three roles and, uh, that management and governance would play. And two, one of those roles, the two of them share. So the two of them, governance and management, in our view, would articulate a way forward in terms of other strategy, uh, development, et cetera. And then it is left for management to execute and then governance to have oversight in terms of this. Whenever we have seen these things happening in various places, whether it's in the private sector or in the, uh, uh, public sector, whether it's in the for-profit sector or in the not-for-profit sector, uh, things go well. And so finally, it rests for me to say that as SEMA, who are responsible for funding, uh, some of these things, we want to see this kind of collaboration continue and we'll be looking for further opportunities for cooperation here. But what I'll say is this, uh, as an academic in the past, we, we kind of share uh, findings only to, uh, those who are academics. And therefore the, the limitation of the findings, the, the dissemination rather of the findings is quite narrow. I'm encouraged that this is a forum for disseminating, but I would like to see dissemination going more and more. Every good researcher, after every finding, would have to answer a so what question, we found this, so what? And the so what at least should address two things, what's a policy implication and what is a practice implication? And those implications should also be disseminated. And it means using language that is accessible to people and ensuring that the shelf life of the findings are extended. And I think all of us over here have a duty to do that. And being the one responsible for research funding, SEMA globally and in our association with the AICPA, would like to be able to support this as one of the things that we support globally. So once again, thank you very much for being here and thank you, panelists, for educating me on so many things I never knew about and for those of you who have questioned. Thank you very much.